Okay, got six o'clock. I'm gonna call the release of Black Earth Village Board Meeting to order on the Tuesday, April 9th at 6:00 PM. If I can get a roll call, please.
Terry Moyer.
Here.
James Collier.
Here.
Scott Patches.
Here.
Sam Willis Rangel.
Here.
Sarah Morrow.
Here.
Trevor Munson.
Here.
Mitch Hoffman.
Here.
All right, let's begin.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where it stays, one nation under God indivisible with the releasing address of Earl.
About that, I just thought of that in that quarter.
Wish I'd seen it.
Oh, I'm glad you didn't. Uh, principal seat, a copy of the notice was delivered to the filing on April 8th, emailed to the Star News and Lakewood Bank, Black Earth Post at the Black Earth Municipal Building, Black Earth Post Office, and Black Earth webpage. Public comment, welcome, we're glad you're here. Anybody have anything they want to speak on? We have a three-minute limit, but we're happy to hear anything you have to say. Observers tonight, wonderful. All right, with no public comment, we will move on to discussion, action, approval of meeting minutes from March 5th and March 18th. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented from March 5th and the 18th.
Second.
I'm waiting.
Yeah, I only see the second.
We're waiting on the 18th, oh, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, action, item number six, operators license applications for Troy, Esther, and Amy Prorome. Am I saying that correctly?
I move it to...
I believe both their applications are in.
I move approval, there's nothing.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, motion carries.
Please note that James Collier abstained.
Start.
Motion carries. Resolution for Lomo May is a copy of, well, it is in the packet. We did the same thing last year. It would start May 1st, run through the month of May. Anybody have any questions or concerns, issues with it? I would entertain a motion if nobody...
I will make a motion to enforce Lomo May effective May 1st.
I'll second.
Now, would there be any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along. Rip, uh, next, uh, item number eight, Rip subdivision stormwater management and retention on maintenance. I believe that is the quote we have been from Bynum.
Yep, um, so this was brought forward from Public Works, uh, Public Works, who did brought up the whole board. Uh, this was the item we talked about back in budgeting last fall. Um, one of the things that was removed from budget item was talked about using the, you all know, funding, uh, helping with this. More or less looking to do some maintenance in, use some stormwater areas. One would be retention upon a, in Rip subdivision, um, I've done it for 15, 17 years, need some attention, uh, storm in walls probably eroded underneath it, so it needs to be pulled out and put back in place. Um, that area needs to be fixed in that retention line as well, because it's erosion control and stuff like that. Um, the rip waterway runs through the rip farm, um, that's again, just another maintenance thing, you know, that comes with these things of taking out the old river rapids, building with sediment over the last many years, just on a maintenance front as well. On Call Road Ditch, which is part of street by the Little League Field, um, trying to work with the property owner next door to see if we can maybe move that road, or sorry, move that ditch a little bit further south, um, to help with weakness along that road, just if there was ever a side off or anything. Um, also same thing, just maintaining that ditch as well for water flow. Um, with this, Town and Country was also here at that meeting comfortably looking to get eighty thousand dollars, um, because we'll be permitting, excuse me, permitting that needs to be done through DNR and all that, since some of this does fall into the township of Black Earth. So some of those permits need to be filled out as we did with the Pearl waterway projects.
And if I recall, with the bid of seventy-two, Town and Country was comfortable going to eighty?
Yep, yeah, we should be able to get permit fees on that, in that coming.
Okay.
And this was already approved through public works, yes.
Yeah, it's a maintenance project, we have to do it, either number one.
I'll move, we'll spend the gold money and approve the project.
Okay. I have a motion by Mitch to...
Second.
And second by Pam. To proceed as instructed by public works.
I just have a clarification question. So it's listed in the proposed project NGO that was, we'd previously discussed, just moving that into...
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I just thought, I thought that I remember talking about it, but...
Well, that's the only bid.
Yeah, no idea there, but it's...
If that amount, the only maintenance item, um, don't necessarily need three bids if it's just maintenance, then we go wrong for a, or reconstruct or new projects, then we have to go with the, maybe the three bids or a few second.
Has Bynum done work?
Yep, they did.
You mean it's done before, yeah?
Yep, they did the Pearl project, and they did a great job with it. Um, we did have a bid on that, same project that was doubled of what Bynum was for the Pearl project at that time, with this Call Road project that was done a few years ago. That set contractor just did a good job at shaping the banks and stuff like that, so it was like an etching and cutting on the bank, so, we've had Bynum's in the past, and they've always been fair, treated us fair price-wise, and then they've always just done great work.
Any other questions, concerns? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who's the item?
Aye, James.
A motion carries. Discussion, action, planning commission recommendation, approval of a conditional use permit for fifteen twenty-nine State Street Black Earth, which the intended use is an animal hospital slash veterinary clinic, pet grooming, uh, application submitted by B and T, Happy Tail LLC. I believe they're here, if you have any questions, but this has gone through planning commission and was approved by planning commission.
Then I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use, uh, application as presented. Any questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you. All right. Uh, number 10, discussion, action, Verbach, Verbicker, economic development planning, community housing survey comprehensive plan update.
Um, so Terry, Matt and I met with Andy from Verbicker, um, just to go over some of the plans for 2024, uh, where the money that has been allocated for a planner to go to, um, they recommended the, here's the housing survey, uh, which is kind of a proposal, and then also the comprehensive plan update, so that hasn't been done in a number of years, um, and any type of, it's kind of somewhere to go library. We had those funding requests or grant requests, it's gonna require an updated piece of that before it's even be submitted, so having that, and then also getting more of a strategic plan for the village, um, having a set list of decisions, um, or goals, and have decision relate to a goal, move forward, um, that was kind of the proposal and the talk that we had.
And that, the way I understood it, from the housing study is the first piece to feed into the comprehensive plan, so it's kind of like piecework, you have to do the one to feed into the second to really get a complete comprehensive plan.
And we had talked about this before when they were here, right, about where they were gonna start, and this was when they're saying that they should start?
Yep.
Okay.
So...
So what are you looking for you to...
They, they didn't really, I think it's up to twenty, isn't it in the budget for up to twenty-eight thousand?
We had thirty, right? So we had, we gotta save some.
These are the two pieces, the official contract of trying to do the work, and some to, to plan it.
So we need approval of the, of the proposal?
If that's the two things that you guys want them to work on.
Do we know that they're able to work on that within the budget that we allowed them?
Yes, that was the...
Those are the two things that they deal with the comprehensive plan.
We told them pretty much what, um, what the funds were that were approved, and they came...
So this is what they're gonna do within that funding?
Yeah, okay. Which will be a good start to updating our comprehensive plan.
Still won't help with grants or any thing, no, it's all...
Yeah, because anything we do with grant applications has to have a comprehensive plan updated.
Right, right.
And the last time it was updated was...
Oh, it was somewhere done in 2021, but...
Not much, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's heading to the ten-year-old mark, so, yeah, it's time.
And there's a part for updates at least every ten years? Doesn't have to be a complete redo every ten years, but it's something that's been sitting on the shelf for a decade, so, yeah, it's a good foundation.
Yeah. I guess my only question with approving, using that entire thirty-five thousand dollars, um, would be concern about what we're expecting of them after that, because we've identified them helping us write grants and obtain funding for some of the projects we want to do, if we don't have any money to hire them for beyond this.
And that was the reason to get them.
Yeah, so that would be my concern, is that we don't have any money for anything of, with your, after that.
But by the time they get the housing study done and the comprehensive plan, we're gonna be heading to new budget year, which we can, we'll have a better idea, but we have to do one step to obtain or to move forward to the other step. But, I mean, we can, you know, if you want to just do one of these pieces...
No, I think we'd get them done. My concern is, we've got advanced, I mean, we, we hired them for, to bring grants and money into the village, and this is part of it, but now we're a year and a half into it, and we've spent some money, and we're, we've not written a grant yet, so we need to really push that.
It's your, your pleasure...
I'm not opposed to moving forward with the proposal, I just, I, I think we just need to keep it top of mind that we hired them for a reason, and we need to start utilizing...
Well, and right now, for any grant writing, they couldn't complete it because their comprehensive plan isn't really up to date, so...
Fair.
I mean, it, I, I totally understand your point, but we're kind of in between this.
Yeah, so I agree that we should, when we're, keep it front and center when we're doing budget, and I know that we need to focus more on, yes, do this piece now, but then we need to branch and focus. Well, and if they can give us some grant funding, that can save on other budget things, so...
Yeah, but keeping in mind for the budget session, how much we really want to put forward towards that.
Right.
We don't want to just keep feeding them, yeah. Okay. Anybody have any preference as to where we, they want to make a motion, or do we...
I'll make a motion to approve, um, moving forward with Verbicker focusing on community housing survey and comprehensive plan update.
I'll second it.
Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and action of committee assignment. So as we just completed the elections, we will be going into a committee assignment for May, so I believe you had the list of committees currently there. I will be going through and making reappointments, so let me know.
Are you gonna do a survey thing online like last year?
Yeah, so I will send out an email, and then what I did last year was just send it out, you know, each one of you, you responded with your, your likes, dislikes, wherever you needed them, and then I'll go through and assign accordingly. Mitch will probably be on six, seven committees.
Perfect. Agreed.
And he'll chair five of those, so we'll just keep him busy. So look for that to come out, um, in the next week, so we can get that moving. With that, I'm sure, I mean, you're aware of the election results. Mitch and Pam are reelected, and we'll have a new board member joining us, Dylan Helmstein. James will be departing the board after sixteen years of service, so thank you to James.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, okay, thank you, James. So, um, just watch for that committee appointment to come through, and then get me a response so I can act on that quickly before our main meeting. Okay? Anything else on that? Any concerns, questions? All right. Geo note spending. Danny, you wanna touch on, update?
Um, so, the, the project is true, though, it makes up, um, the bottom number has that student, and so, the ten thousand now to allocate, um, for, keeping in mind that it needs to be done in, uh, for June, or July.
By the end of July?
Yeah, it needs to be allocated and done for July. So, to prioritize whatever projects, uh, that need to go on, um, has a municipal roof in there that was talked about a couple of times, um, for our, for another earth, sunlight, highlight, never, skylight, um, that is really old, original to the building, that's not supposed to be so yellow, and at least be catastrophic in, in growth, um, standing with either a replacement or changing that, or...
Is the hillside overview, I mean, it's on here, it's proposed?
So that was something that was brought up at Public Works, we just start getting pricing, just to put a little overlay on that.
Yeah.
And so you're working on that?
Yeah. The other reason is, cost of that to do total reconstruct is probably a thousand, we'll have, there are funds, grants, that coming in right now, so overlay on it, buy us some time.
Yeah.
How much time would that buy us, if you remember?
Twenty, yeah. Two, two to three years.
Two to three years.
No, it should, if you do an overlay on it, could potentially be ten, fifteen years, then move it away. That would kind of, according to what we have in the other spots.
You're still currently getting bids on that, so? Will you take those bids back to Public Works then?
Yeah.
On initial, yeah, okay.
Do I recall, we got, we did get some closer estimates for the skylight here, not necessarily replacing it, but a recommendation of just removing it.
So with the skylight, there was a couple different options of either doing a replacement or just eliminating it, and making it, or you could put in some type of lighting that would kind of give a sky thing versus actually having that. Um, my opinion, opinion about skylights in Wisconsin are just, they're bad news. They just can harbor water and cause water issues, and thankfully this one hasn't had those yet.
So is the bid process, you'll get it both ways, either way?
We do have some...
What were we gonna do with that?
It's still in there, it's still...
Yeah, we pushed it back because it wasn't leaking right now, and the roofs didn't find shape, I mean...
Right, we wanted to, we wanted to, we were gonna wait with the skylight, then we decided to do the roof, right?
Yeah, we had a contractor come in to look at the roof.
And it was okay.
We had a couple leaks that were fixed, um, a few years ago, since those leaks were taken care of, uh, at this time.
So we're not gonna do anything with the roof, so can, can that come off the GO list? Still got Municipal Building upgrades, real question mark?
Yeah, it's up to you guys. Danny, you had worked with a contractor, that came in to look at the skylight, and did he ever get a crisis on it, or?
Yeah, it's what I presented at Public Works, or then Public Works, and that's what he thinks, right?
The other thing that I'd like to see, maybe spend a little bit of money on is painting the utility building, it looks like.
This one.
No, they get the nice fancy side.
At, at least we could do is get a price on it, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't look the best anymore.
So, I, I don't remember the report, uh, off the top of my head for the roof, though. I thought that that was, that, that was noted that there were potential problems with that, like, not just...
There was a quote that they had.
It was fifty thousand dollars. Just, just to replace the highlight, put another one in, though. Yeah.
But I thought the roof report was that it was, it would, it would last, that there wasn't major to have that replaced right away, it wasn't...
The worst part was the skylight and all that.
Yeah, the right skylight, but the roof was all, yeah.
But that's, that's what I guess my concern is, is if the skylight is a problem, it only takes one leak to cause a lot more problems, a lot more costs and damage. Water damage is not fun, so, I would personally lean towards fixing things that could, if they fail, cause more damage than, and, uh, what do you call those? Cosmetic, cosmetic...
I think there's, I think there's, I think there's money for both.
Okay.
Why don't we, Danny, why don't we go ahead and put that on as an agenda item for next Public Works, and bring it back, it's...
And bring those quotes back, yeah?
Probably get rebates.
Yeah, get updated. Probably, it's been a while since we've put that out.
You don't have anything to do anyway?
It's, uh, last, I'd say it's eight, eight, ten months ago.
Eight, ten months ago, yeah.
All right.
We survived the winter.
Which, you know...
Which wasn't really a winter.
We just survived spring, because, you know... All right, anything else on the GO note? Moving on, discussion at number thirteen, discussion, action, invoices to be paid.
I make a motion, we, if the invoices as presented.
There's a motion, second?
No, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? No questions? Or does everybody have time to look?
We're good.
We're good. We have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, committee report, I'm first up with the fire district. We met on Thursday, March 14th. Uh, Chief Mahaka reported that meetings are still ongoing with both Town of Vermont and, uh, Hazel, session on services. Uh, they replaced the old repeater. It was a joint purchase between the village, between the village of Black Earth Vanguard and the Black Earth Fire District, so it's a better service and opportunities for use, and it moves it from the, our, the village office basement to be housed in the fire department. That's right, okay. And they've got the new, hose was received, it replaced the old five-inch hose, a tank leak on Tender Six was repaired, we reviewed the vehicle replacement schedule, they held a very successful breakfast on Sunday. Very good. Do you have a number? He was...
Probably be profit around twelve thousand dollars for the day.
Yeah, a little bit lower, attendee-wise, turnout.
Really?
About the same amount of money.
Yeah, same amount of money.
That's crazy, because it just seems busy, busy, busy.
It was early.
Very turnout.
Two hundred and twenty the first hour.
Really? Nice.
And our next meeting is May 9th. Clerk Treasurer, financial report. Danny.
Um, so we've been working with Madalot, um, survey stuff, um, the brought up before, but our electric substation, the spring, brought up again, um, and our water tower are both in the township, they're not in the village, um, so we're working with Tony Mahaker and getting things surveyed, um, for the annexed building, which was talked about with Andy from Verbicker, um, just was a, a part of our bridge, uh, and then with all the work that we encourage with the stuff to get that into one parcel, and then at the same time, it's gonna be brought into the village for that. Uh, our new computers are in and updated, we had our Phoenix consulting come in for computer switchovers, so that took a day on Friday, our, out of using ten-year-old software, but it's very nice. Um, been working with Beth on the TDS bill for, uh, we still have DSL to the building, um, so see if we can get fiber in, and actually have things that are faster, um, lots of training with Danny, so she's due on last Saturday, but right now, still haven't had the baby, so, um, in the next few days, um, maternity week, and commission meeting for , uh, for, for switch, um, we were testing a lot, visiting, making some training docs for the new, my viewpoint for invoices, we're working out some kinks, um, that's of our first run-through of entry invoices and disinstallation, pretty smooth, some kinks are slower, some faster, mostly a, a benefit for sure, so she's working on getting that all together, sent out chicken letters for updates to residents, but...
That makes me giggle every time.
Update to six chickens, um, and then just reminded them for the updates every January, and the register with the state for the block safety. Yeah.
When you held a, an election?
Oh, yes.
You missed it all.
The election.
Yeah.
There did the election, um, for spring turnout and the snowstorm, um, for about fifty percent turnout, so that was...
Really? That's pretty cool.
I believe that there would be a lot more turnout, so everything on there, but, oh, I think it was, for the weather, because some roads deteriorated really quickly, and kind of unexpectedly, um, so, busy with that. Danny's been working on, showing her our election software, getting, um, all of our poll book entered, and all of the post-election, all the post-election stuff that has to be done.
Any questions for Danny?
I just want to add, through discussion with Civic a little bit, that the my view, as they work through those kinks, and it could, some of them might be internet, but that is what we will use to drill down, is the my view. So it is coming online?
Mm-hmm.
It's, will be there hopefully soon. Did they ever get back to you? I talked to them again today. Today.
What did they say? Don't want to talk about it?
No, give me a week.
Let her comb the horn.
It was a little difficult.
And we're still, um, filling audit for PSC from 2021, that's been out there, very insistent from the PSC, and a lot of time, and very difficult to navigate through that.
And that's from 2021? Didn't we just go, didn't we just get done with, on it with PSC?
So that was the, that was the rate case, there was a separate filling audit that was done in 2020, 21, um, that was never drafted.
Nothing's fast from them, except if they want to give our, our way.
I think it was on, it was on their, um, there's a lot of things with their staff that they had some issues with, and they decided to pull that report, was a month, just happened that's maybe years, so that threw a lot of things off, and so, a lot of, all the information, so...
Lots of...
Danny and Beth and everybody have been really, really struggling with trying to get, act with them, and, you know...
Yeah, it's been a lot of, they're taking a lot of our time. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Any other questions? All right, uh, Dana Iowa, Mr. Foyle.
The event on the twenty-first, I was not able to attend, but I had talked to Jeff and they went over bills and they're getting ready to end their year. Their fiscal year ends in July, so they're trying to get all the information to accrue ups and everything like that coming up. Uh, you should hear about that in June. There was no discharge violations and the next meeting is April eighteenth.
April eighteenth? Who will, will, you'll be attending that meeting?
I, I can, yeah.
When is that?
You'll still be on, right?
Yeah.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
I thought it was the twenty-third. Oh, it doesn't matter, I don't care.
It's the thirty.
Okay. All right. Something to keep in mind then. Okay, thanks, Jane.
So, I don't need to attend?
Mitch is the alternate. Yeah.
Yeah, you need to attend.
I don't care either.
I will.
Because it switches before that, right?
Yeah, it's.
So, you can, right.
Yeah. Okay, then we'll have Mitch attend. Dana Iowa, he is the alternate. Okay. Okay, thanks, Jane. Uh, in economic development, Pam.
So, we have not met yet, we're still working to get hooked up with.
Groundswell.
Groundswell because we want to have them present what their plans are and where their trail lines are at, so that we can kind of match up with what economic development really is, is going to go after through, uh, the town of Black Earth or the town, village of Black Earth. So, is that fif, is there a meeting on the fifteenth? There's. A meeting on the fifteenth.
I think that's emergency management.
Emergency management canceled for the EMS to get ground, to get ground swell in, but now ground swell might have a conflict, so. We're looking tentatively, it is at the fifteenth at six thirty, right? Six, sorry, six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, right?
All right, potentially.
Potential.
Should I be talking with Peter?
Um, yeah, let me, I'll text, uh, what's his name?
I have it at five.
He's out.
At five thirty. Well, that's what, when it always is, whatever time it always is.
Okay.
Tax day.
All right. Anything else, Pam? Nope. All right, emergency management, Tyler Monson.
Uh, we have not met since the last board meeting. Be working to reach a schedule for the next meeting.
Okay. EMS. Um, I did not, uh, may get to that one, that they had changed it and then I went to the twenty-first, but I do know that Cam was the first, this was the first meeting for Cam to be full in his directorship and it was also the first month that Brian Egg is doing the month end. So, Brian Egg took that, the month end stuff. So, I think, um, the report was that everything went fairly smoothly. There's, uh, been a couple of LTA hires, there's been a couple of volunteers coming in and so, I think that class is about done, it'll be done at the end of this month and then there'll, there'll be some more volunteers coming in. That's pretty much it. Has there days out of service gone down, way down? Way down, right? Why?
Hard to say.
It's going now.
It's, it's going down.
Okay. It's a work in progress, yeah, like it always is. Yeah. But. But there is gonna. It's not the same, it isn't, it isn't, I don't think it's as bad as it, what it was. Okay. All right. And another meeting date, nothing set? There won't, uh, five, well, they met March, April, May, so it'll be like May-ish. Something in May. All right. Perfect. Uh, Gateway to the dress list.
Gateway has not met since the last board meeting. Um, the next meeting is set for Thursday, April twenty-fifth at nine thirty AM.
Nine thirty AM?
Yes. Usually it's Zoom here, usually it's Zoom meeting.
Well, Zoom.
Yeah.
Zoom, okay. Is that Peterson's, does Peterson know?
Peterson's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's the whole board.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I don't think he has typically, so it might be nice if he would, yeah. That would be good. Library board, Sarah.
Uh, we met on March nineteenth. Billy's here though, if you don't mind giving an update.
We'll, we'll roll right into your director. Really well for Sarah.
Committee has, yes, I, I use it myself secretly.
Why not?
Right?
All right, uh, so the library board last met on March nineteenth. Um, it is National Library Week, happy National Library Week, everyone. Um, and today is National Library Workers' Day, so, uh, we brought in a gentleman, a staff. The library staff and I are doing a spirit meet this week to celebrate and we're also having to write a love note to the library campaign, so we're kind of thanking everybody who's been in the comments of the library, um, which is nice after the eclipse yesterday to have a little bit of positivity.
Did the library?
Oh, boy, did we.
Did you?
Yeah.
Are you gonna tell us?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm sure, serious under.
But today was, uh, from our library program, T-shirt day, so.
And that's this year's T-shirt, right?
That's this year's T-shirt, yeah. Um, our eclipse programming, which was yesterday, was hugely successful. We provided over four hundred pairs of glasses and hosted over three hundred people for eclipse viewing and that's between two concurrent programs. We had one that was open to the public, that was in Bets Park, and then we had another one that we conducted in partnership with Wisconsin Heights because it was on a Monday afternoon, um, so we broke kids out of school and we gave them all eclipse glasses so they could experience it as well.
You had glass throwers?
Yep.
They were a commodity by the time this thing was on.
Yeah. Um, and probably that morning, we probably fielded fifty or sixty phone calls, um, about if we had eclipse glasses. Um, so, I, but I'm glad that we kept the ones that we did because we had just enough.
Are you gonna donate those or are we gonna keep? There's, there's something else we can do. We're donating our.
Blue football.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I thought, yeah, it's.
You can donate those.
South America. I can't remember where it is, but there, there's a program collecting. Yeah.
Yeah.
For reviewing in August. Yeah. So, the school we're at, we're gonna donate ours to that.
I didn't collect them after.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, I don't have them, but I'm happy to just receive.
So, there's another one in August?
Uh, October second in Sou- Southern South America.
Yeah, how long it takes to get them.
But apparently only a hundred and seventy-five thousand people live in the path of that one. Different.
And so, they're saying they're gonna send their glasses.
So, the kids, the kids there? Yeah.
Interesting, I'll bring that up at the home. The glasses are only good for three years, so they will do no good here.
Right? Yeah.
But we, we bought glasses for our, oh.
For your residents.
Independent living and assisted living?
Yeah.
So, we'll just see if we can get them and then just, I thought you bought it?
Yeah, I can give you a free, we have it.
Oh, yeah, I just heard that too.
Um, we also had a booth at the Easter egg hunt and we had over a hundred and forty interactions as a result. Um, I had a counter going on my phone. Uh, and we gave books away to, I would say, almost everyone of those interactions. We just had a table. Um, so, I love getting books in here, so. We also, um, did like kind of a fun kids election in the library during the month leading up to the election, yeah. Um, but we had it in the library, we had little kids ballots and they could vote for their favorite pet and their favorite food. Um, so I did tally them up, favorite food was pizza, favorite pet was dogs. Um, and then the last fun stuff, the fundraising feasibility study is still underway and we're also starting on our strategic planning process. Got a lot of formless thinking things coming. Um, we're also working on a social media policy, um, and the policy will cover the purpose and the goals of our social media as well as set guidelines for what we can and cannot post, um, essentially just trying to create a mission-driven, um, digital environment. Um, and then I also got support from the library board, plan and staff development day in September, where we'll be getting training from District One EMS on the use of the disperators and the overdose aid kits that we have in the municipal building. Um, and we'll also have a tour of our library system facilities. That way we can better understand the services that are available to us as library staff, that way we can better utilize them and give better service to the community. Um, we've got Messy Monday, Storytime and Toddler Art all happening in April. We also, yeah, we also have blood pressure monitoring, we have a book discussion coming up, we've got a Taylor Swift party, we've got an Earth Day celebration, we've got Unbook Club, we've got Teen Advisory Board, and then our next meeting is April sixteenth at seven PM.
Was April sixteenth? Yep. Any questions? All right, moving on, the president's report. I just wanted to touch base on, um, in March, I attended a Stockbury Healthcare Community Input Session and they, they sent out a nice report. It has, it's under like the Wisconsin Heights, um, and in fact, it was Wisconsin Heights Plain, it's wherever their clinics are, so we're considered as part of Wisconsin Heights Clinic, but it had themes for access to healthcare, social support and connection, housing affordability and accessibility, nutrition. So, they touched on a lot of those and had some nice bullet points. So, I think, I'm gonna send this on to Burbank, is it just kind of as a start, I was the first kind of input session that I've attended that they had kind of a nice report and I just kind of wanna make Burbacker aware of it. Some of it wouldn't pertain to what they need to do because it goes into the Stockbury, Lowdy and Plain area, but for our area, I think it might serve as just at, at least a starting point and a talking point for them to see what was brought forward because they did a lot of, uh, community input surveys on their own, so. And if you want a copy of the report, I can send you one, but. That's all I had on that, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, follow up for that. Now, we'll go right into Public Works Director Report, Public Works Committee. Gonna pass that over to Mr. Paul.
Well, we met on the nineteenth, I had to leave early, so I'm not aware of, had to go to a Vanguard meeting, so I don't know.
You want me to take care of it?
Take care of it.
Um, let's see, I'll skip the Vanguard stuff. Uh, we talked about the crosswalk out here by Veterans Park, uh, talked about crosswalk painting and parking stall painting on Main Street, uh, the rip subdivision, stormwater stuff, we've already talked about that. Um, Town and Country is still working on wrapping up those designs for our future street projects and utility projects, um, when we get together with them to finalize some of those things, um, that are gonna be submitting for our future funding stuff that's coming out. Uh, we talked about crack filling and chip sealing, uh, which is part of the Go Notes, um, our, sorry, Go Notes stuff, um, so I got a couple of those folks coming in for chip sealing, crack filling, uh, Public Works more, gave the go-ahead of, we felt, um, the bids are very close to each other for the chip sealing. Crack filling's a little bit different, um, because the bitters, they do different work. One does a little bit better job with a little more rubber stuff and like that, so, finalizing those, um, lift station easement stuff is part of the generator project for the lift stations, um, so that's just more work of making sure we have easements for those generators to be placed, uh, so that was one of the things Dana was talking about. We've been working with Tony Walker on some things, so that'll be something as part of that project, we'll get that, taking care of, uh, sidewalk surveys, so with the sidewalk work we had done last year of all these sidewalk buildings, um, have the ADA stuff for trip hazards and that, uh, we went through what work was done at twenty-three, what's proposed at twenty-four and there was ten thousand budgeted for twenty-four sidewalk stuff, we've decided to use five thousand of that at this time to have them start on the process of coming back to take care of those trip hazards. We are still this week trying to get valves exercised, um, with the, we do most of ours with our own equipment and then we have a special tool that we get for Wisconsin Rural Water. We have some stubborn valves that are just up there to try turning, so we get a tool from them, um, to do those. Had plans to get the street sweeper out, uh, then the snow came through again, um, talked about equipment needs and replacements, uh, so that's kind of just ongoing future stuff as well, and also, I was told to get the bids for Hillside Road. Uh, with, in the last month of March, um, sorry, last month of March, Tony did go to a conference for his water credits, um, on Family Cross for a few days with Wisconsin Rural Water, um, and also Tony has just completed his twenty-year anniversary for the village of Black Earth, he celebrated that in March, so, good thing. Uh, bathrooms were opened yesterday at Community Park and Bets Park.
I'll hope that when the bathrooms open up, summer's coming. Mr. Chair, did you have anything?
Was there a next meeting date?
Yeah.
Scheduled?
It was, um.
To be discerned, waiting for elections.
Okay.
So, I think once we get the.
The committee's assigned.
Yeah.
So, at this point, no meeting pending the new assignment. All right, any other questions? For either Matt or Mr. Hatcher? Hearing none. Press committee, Mitch.
We did not meet since the last board meeting and we've not set one up because of elections.
You didn't meet on the twenty-third?
Yeah.
I had the twenty-fifth.
We had a meeting after that, didn't we? Because we had a meeting after that and we approved the purchases.
We have the twenty-fifth.
Oh.
Where are you?
I thought we came back to the board and actually got the approval for the, but it was through the committee, that's right. So, we did have one on the tw- twenty.
You don't have minutes, huh?
I don't have minutes. Danny, you have minutes?
We talked about, uh, Southport, Black Earth Creek Park, um, trees in Bets Park, um, there was some discussion, uh, Community Park joining with, uh, the school property over there, green space, some playground equipment. Um, I've been working a lot.
You know you were there.
Yeah. I've been working a lot with Phil Camanetti, um, on some of the desires of the donated money we have, um, we've gotten a couple of small things, the larger purchase that was approved in that meeting was a ball field groomer, um, and we hooked into a couple of different options, used our source well, hitting capabilities and ended up getting a ball groomer for that.
They come in yet? Did that come in yet?
Uh, that, maybe a couple of weeks. So, we talked about weed and feed, uh, program, holding tools approved that, patching program, that's already been done for Community Park and Veterans Park. A little bit of conversation about security camera stuff. And next meeting has not been set either because of elections.
The security cameras, are they, are you moving forward? Is that just over here for the thing?
Well, we talked about, we talked about over here at Bets Park, talked about Community Park, um, Scott's been doing some research on that, so.
I, yeah, I've just done a bunch of research the last.
We're gonna bring that back at the next meeting.
So, we'll bring that up at the next meeting.
That'd be.
Yeah. There's a lot of options. There are a lot of options.
I suppose and they're priced within zero to a lot of money.
And the way technology changes and, yeah, it's.
Okay, cool. Now, that'll be going to, through parks first?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good. Anything else, any questions?
That one, well, I'll.
Um, police committee.
We met, um, excuse me, March twelfth, uh, we discussed adding an extra officer for the Saturday of field days, as we've done in years past, um, so we'll have two officers on from noon to midnight on the Saturday, regular coverage on Friday. Um, we also talked about Cartman and, um, Watkins have both been providing some coverage for Maisel Maney while Officer Gonzalez is still on leave. Um, they just shared that it's been going well, but I also mentioned that we are looking to probably schedule a future meeting in conjunction with, um, Maisel Maney's Police Committee, um, just to collaborate. Uh, that was basically the extent of what was discussed. Did we set another meeting date? I couldn't find one in my calendar, so, future date, TB.
Yep. Committee appointment, okay. All right, electrical superintendent report. Take it away. Take it away.
Can't interview Ken for the job opening. We've interviewed the, uh, one, yeah. Oh, one yesterday, one on Wednesday, and one in Friday. On hiring, wait, hopefully next week. Uh, Taylor took his German test last week to pass. The end of the fire zone. Um, we were able to finish up, uh, paperwork to ditch the structures in the substation of Platinum. They needed a property sales agreement and a little sale. Um, ended up purchasing it for a dollar. So that should be a good addition to that sub. Originally they wanted to take it down themselves, which then until next winter, after discussion and having proof of, uh, lab building insurance. We decided that we will take it down ourselves, that way we can do it at our convenience. And plus we can know how it all works better.
Is that through the city of Platinum?
Yeah, through Alliance, once it's located in Platinum.
Okay.
So, yeah, so hopefully in the next few weeks, we, there'll probably be more than a day's thing, but. Kind of, whenever we have time, we find a way of going down there, start taking it apart and we'll get all that here. We met with ATC, um, there's what they need to do for the substation project and, so they are coming up with the final planned timeline. Um, takes time. And I, and then actually the day that we met with ATC, I was able to talk with the engineers about the Alliance tie. And cause Alliance required like 50 amps of power, if we would make the tie with them on Route 78. So we verified it, that we shouldn't be able to do that for them. Hopefully get the tie put in.
Did you have a strong response for candidates?
No, uh, yeah, we had like probably 50, 60 candidates. I mean, granted, some of them were terrible, but.
But you had a pool.
Unqualified.
And you, you doing the three interviews then, you got it down to three right away for the first round, or, yeah?
I was gonna say, I guess we're gonna start with the three.
Okay.
And, and from there. Um, it's, it's, I guess, you know, how much, oh, you know, how many people do you pull in to interview?
Yeah, oh, no, yeah.
And it hates everybody's time and.
Yeah, three's a good, yeah, that's good. I was just interested to see how many total applicants.
I was gonna say, I mean, yeah, we had a lot of good applicants, a lot of people on the line schools and now that, we're kind of starting by pulling the best applicants that are local.
Yeah.
Starters and then.
That's good.
Like, I was kind of disappointed, I was hoping for more local and what we got, got like barely, and, and somebody from, uh, Mazo, so.
Okay, good. Good luck on that search. All right. Vanguard.
We met on the 19th, the meeting that I left Public Works for. Um, basically just, uh, to Kurt's, uh, initial survey of what's going on, asked him a few questions. Everything was going along fine with the books, we approved the blow. And, uh, our next meeting is May 21st.
That meeting, it lasted hours.
Yeah, that was a record. We just placed some tough ones.
That was a good one. Okay. All right, any questions for Scott? All right. That takes us to 15. I would entertain a motion. Do you want to read them?
I would move then to enter in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 19.85 and 1. Carrying deliberating or negotiating or purchasing of public property, investing in public funds or contacting other specified public business. Wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Um, Black Earth Creek Park building demolition bids, development sale, planning for parcel 107, 0806, dash, 264, dash, 2831, dash, 5. Co-op property, uh, purchase update, parcel 0806, dash, 264, dash, 8653, dash, 9. And 0806, dash, 262, dash, 98457, dash, 7. And also the Dane County Police Services contract.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
That's by Jane. So, couple.
All right, Terry Moyer.
Here.
James Coyle.
Yes.
Scott Hatchett.
Yes.
Hamlet Randle.
Yes.
Sarah Morrow.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
The talking.
Yes.
All right. We are moving into closed session.
Motion that we go ahead and elect lawns unlimited proposal for demolition of Creek Park.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any additional questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye? Um, motion.
Your opposed or your report?
The law. All right. I think we have one other item that I need a motion for, and that's in regards to the co-op property.
Tyler? I'm trying to remember all the things we talked about with it. Uh, I make a motion that we. Move forward with. Answering these questions, that we would, that we buy parcel, uh, which one is it? Uh. Co-op property, 0806, 2648653, dash, 9, and 0806, 2629845, dash, 7. Um, that we would plan on buying them as is, as long as we can confirm that contamination off-site, or expected contamination off-site, would not be our future liability. Um, we would not post earnest money, uh, and we would want to close as soon as possible. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any final questions? Concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All abstained. They're abstained, uh, or, James, was that a no?
No.
That was a no. Motion still passes. Uh, any other business that may be brought in for the board? Your agendas? Uh, setting the next meeting is May 7th, we're back on our regular first Tuesday. Yeah.
Do you sign?
Yeah. Thank you. Watch for that email from me for me assigning.
I'll watch my spam. She shows up and I can't get her to go in there.
I don't like it, yeah.
I got an email yesterday that a freight carrier found my freight of money. My village email.
Oh, yeah, I got.
Little ship carrier.
I got that one too.
Gotta call them and claim it.
Oh, hey. Cash.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, hearing none.
Oh, yeah.
Mitch or Coyle?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't think.
I will second.
That's Mr. Coyle's adjournment after 16 years of dedicated service.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, hey, watch radio, Paul. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, James, thank you all. Don't worry. Yeah.
Could just be a year friend.
No, no, I'm done. Done.